I'd like to call the Water Works Board to meeting for Wednesday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Troxel, roll call, please.
Yes, sir, Councilman. Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley.
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara.
Here.
Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson.
Here.
NICE Engineering Neil Simstad.
Here.
Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen.
Here.
Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. And Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. The Water Board consists of three members, myself, Councilwoman Robin Arvenitis, and Councilman Kevin Conley. So we will exclude at this time Councilman Caleb Johnson and Councilman Thomas Schmidt. Minutes of the May tenth, two thousand twenty-three public meeting, pleasure of the board, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three, zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Poser of the board?
Motion to approve claims?
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries three, zero. Reports, Mr. Gorman, any reports?
No reports.
Any reports from council members? Hearing none, we'll move on. There is no new business, no old business and no new business, so I'll take any business from the floor regarding waterworks. Any business from the floor regarding waterworks? Any business from the floor regarding waterworks? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned and we're going to redevelopment. Called to order, the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. The time is seven oh four P. M. The Redevelopment Commission consists of the entire council, so we'll bring in Caleb Johnson and Thomas Schmidt. And also our advisor from the Lake Central School Board, Nicole Kelly is with us. Minutes of the May tenth, two thousand twenty-three public meeting.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is five, zero. Claims, any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Reports, any staff reports?
No reports.
Attorney Austin.
The annual notification of intent to capture increment process has been completed with the service of notice on the overlapping taxing units and the processing by the clerk's office or the administrative offices to the IDLGF.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson or Mr. Gorman, can you provide an update on our downtown revitalization, twenty-two West?
Sure.
Give an update and we'll wrap.
Sure, we are currently working on the guidelines for the Riverfront District. Sent those out and they're under review right now. As far as the request for proposals, that'll come after this Riverfront District has been set and those guidelines are approved by the town council.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, one more, there's a couple more structures on that property, twenty-two West, just to the west of us here. And we're still waiting on Nipco for disconnecting the gas service to one of those units, so those will be demolished once that is done.
Good to see the progress, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other reports from council members? Okay, we have no old business, we have no new business, any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven oh seven P. M. The roll call remains the same as the previous meeting of the Redevelopment Commission. First on the agenda are the minutes of the May two thousand twenty-three public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved, five to zero. Next, we have claims, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports, are there any staff reports for the Utility Board?
No reports.
Any council member reports?
Nope.
No.
There is no old business, there is no new business, do we have any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board meeting? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening, I'd like to call the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, June fourteenth, at approximately seven oh seven P. M. First item is the minutes of the May tenth, two thousand twenty-three public meeting.
So moved.
The roll call for the Town Council is the same as the Utility Board meeting, first item minutes of May tenth.
There's a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Next item is the claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second on claims, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries five, zero, thank you. Report, reports, we'll start to the left here, Chief Patterson.
Yes, good evening, I would just like to report that for the month of May, Sheriff's Fire Department responded to two hundred and eighty-two DMS calls, fifty-nine fire calls, for a total of three hundred and forty-one calls for the month of May. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief Patterson. Chief Sormas from Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, nothing to report this month.
Deputy Chief McAmire.
No reports.
John Novosich, Park Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank all the departments for their hard work with the festival, Police Department, Fire, Public Works, and of course, Park staff. We had some challenges over the weekend, but with everyone's dedication, we pulled everything off that we could. We received a four thousand dollar grant for this year's symphony from the Indiana Arts Commission. And our Pennsy Phase Four project is coming to completion. It's scheduled to be completed next week, except for seating, they better get the pavement down Friday, final surface coat, and it's pretty much open and ready to go, we'll close out the grant by the end of the month. So that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Novosich. Town Engineer Neil Simstad. Public Works Chad Nandorf. Operation Manager Andy Hansen. Town Manager Jim Gorman.
No reports.
Council members.
One report, Mr. President, Senator Dan Dornell is with us here in the audience, Senator, thank you. Just on behalf of the council, town staff, wanted to thank you in your duties as Lake County Councilman. You allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the town of Sherrville from Lake County ARPA funding. And this is going to come very much in handy because we have an upcoming storm sewer project. The project itself consists of replacing eight hundred feet, seventy-two inch corrugated metal pipe that has been in service a long time, about fifty years. So thank you for supporting the town and your constituents, it's much appreciated.
One item I do want to bring up, and I'll let Jim or Andy respond to it, but I want to our town and our staff that put together the application, we just received another eight point four million, is that correct, Andy?
Yeah, close to eight point five, yeah.
Almost eight point five million dollar grant that we received for our Kennedy Avenue project on our first phase. That was a grant that went on a state level, and I want to congratulate our Congressman, Congressman Mervan, our State Senator Young. It went all the way to the matter of fact to Pete Voodoojek, which is the Transportation Cabinet Member that helped out to get this grant. Jim or Andy, do you want to explain a little bit of what type of grant it was and all that?
Yeah, it was a federal grant from the Federal Railroad Administration through the Ministry of Transportation, we applied for it. And most of those grants go to communities that eliminate the at great crossings in their communities. I believe there were sixty-one communities that got grants through that program, all around the country.
Once again, thank you to staff for getting that prepared and getting that out, so
You're welcome.
That really helps us out a lot, helps us to be able to save more money for the Phase Two, Three, and Four, because that grant was strictly for the Phase One. Good work, everybody. Any other reports? Council members? No other reports, at this time I'll open it up to the floor for public comments regarding the gen items. Is there any public comments regarding gen items? No public comments, then we'll move right into old business, we have no old business, we'll move right into new business. First item on new business is Item A is to award bid for the Oakside Drive and Hickory Place Water Main Replacement Project. Mr. Simstad.
Mr. President, the bid report which was submitted for your review and consideration for the Oakside Drive and Hickory Place Water Main Replacement, the summary of that report is the award would be made to the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, and that would be to Grimmer Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and zero cents. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Neil, any questions for Mr. Simstad? I'll entertain a motion to award a bid.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award a bid under the advisement of our town engineer to Grimmer Construction. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero, thank you. Item B is award bid for our Community Crossing Grant, which is two thousand twenty-three dash one. Mr. Hanson, do you want to comment on that, or is that Mr. Simstad?
Thank you, Director of Operations. This is the bid report for the town of Sherrville, two thousand twenty-four street resurfacing projects, which as you had mentioned, is the two thousand twenty-three dash one Community Crossings Matching Grant Award from Indott. And the summary of that report is, for these projects, the award would be made to Milestone Contractors North Incorporated in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and zero cents.
And that's a fifty-fifty grant, correct, Mr. Simstad?
Yes.
Where the town will pay fifty percent and the state will pay the other fifty percent.
Absolutely correct, yes.
And just a reminder, how many segments of road are we paving?
Sixteen, I believe.
Sixteen, thank you. Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C is consider the release of a two-year maintenance certi bond of fifty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and ten cents and insurance of a certificate of release for the Amberley Estates, Phase Two. Mr. Nandorf?
I got it, I got it.
Or Jim, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, yeah, Amberley subdivision two, last phase of that seventy lot, R-one development. All punch list items are complete, and with this development being complete, those utilities and road segments will come into our inventory and we'll maintain them.
Thank you.
Mr. President, motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item D is consider acceptance of donations for two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Mr. Troxel, would you help us out and read those for us, please?
Certainly, Councilman. Through the end of May, we received, as Councilman Schmidt said, two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. These went to the following funds, to the Park Summer Programs Fund, this is a Jacob LLC donation for Candy Drop, which is two hundred dollars. To the donation fund for the ambulance, the Sheriff Alliance Club fundraiser equipment donation, donated two thousand five hundred dollars. And to the donation fund for the VIPS program, Sheriff of Police Department, VIPS Joyce and Dennis Mills, donated twenty-five dollars. All three of these contributions totaled two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars through the month of May.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, thank you, Mr. Troxel, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Item E is the request to access town property to repair material containment wall behind Smith Concrete. The petitioner, Rich Ruth, from Target Rentals, location is one thousand one U. S. Highway forty-one. Mr. Volkman, welcome.
Thank you, council members, for consideration of this request tonight. I'm here with Mr. Ruth, the owner of Target Rentals, and the property of one double oh one U. S. Forty-one. If, and I
Hey Bob, can you just pull that mic a little closer?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, how's that?
That's good.
I used to be on the other end of this, Bob.
In your packet, there's a black and white photo, you know, of the entire property. To give you a little history on this, this was the old former diamond machine welding property. And back in the mid-nineties, Mr. Ruth purchased this property and started construction on Target Rentals. If you look at the north side of that property, between the existing building, there was a railroad track there at one time that went to east, and then it tied into what is now the Pennsy Trail. And that was like the We discovered as the town worked on the Pennsy Trail, is following that old railroad radius, is that actually went off of the property and onto what was then the railroad property. And it's been there for twenty-five years like that, hasn't really hurt anybody, and nobody's ever said a word about it. But it became evident when we were working on the Pennsy Trail. If you look further on the, in your packet and on the, what Robbie's put up here on the board, is that concrete block wall has started to go over. Some of it has already fallen off, and you can see that it's not in really good condition. Mr. Ruth wants to make an effort to, you know, to repair that wall. And our request would be to allow him to go on to the town's property to repair it. Repairing it from his side of the property would necessitate the removal of all the material that's stored there, which there's probably, I would just guess, maybe one or two thousand yards of material there, be in stone, concrete, and sand. There's no place to move it to, which that's what Smith Redymix uses for their concrete plant. So it's kind of an unusual request, it's kind of twofold. The request would be to go use, access the backside of the trail, not going on the actual trail itself, but the property adjacent to the trail, to disassemble that wall so that it can be straightened out and reassembled. Part of that effort will be to try to push it back as far as we can towards onto the correct property line, but I don't know how easy that's going to be, because it's probably been in the range at the highest point, probably fifteen to twenty feet, onto the, over the property line. But, I mean, it is what it is, as one attorney told me one time, it's been there a long time. And to enhance that area, and there's other drawings that Mr. Ruth has provided, he's proposing a berm up against that concrete wall on the trail side of the property and plant trees and landscaping on that property, on that. So it's kind of an unusual request. You know, I talked to Jim and Andy, and, you know, and, you know, I know they can't give him permits to, for him to do work on the town's property, so appropriately, the only place that I could see would be to come in as the council and ask for your consideration of this request. Mr. Ruth has been a, you know, an established businessman here in town for better than twenty-five years. That site probably provides, I don't know, Rich, what do you think, fifty jobs? How many jobs for your site, maybe fifty, between you and Smith? Probably about fifty full-time jobs are accommodated on that site. I think he says maybe a hundred. So that's what we've got in front of you, certainly entertain any questions to, you know, if you consider this, Mr. Ruth would provide the town with, you know, certificate of insurance, naming the town as additionally insured. All the work would be done away from the trail, so it wouldn't actually, he wouldn't be driving equipment over the trail. But, you know, that wall needs to be disassembled and then reassembled.
Mr. President, I have a thought, I guess, Bob, my first thought and my first concern is, this is a terrible precedent for the town to set. We own property and somebody else has their stuff on it, and we're gonna contemplate allowing them to leave it there. And that's a bad precedent for the town to set. However, the wall has been there for twenty-five years, I know I've seen it, I've went back through the slides on GIS, and I So I will admit that it wasn't town property when that was put there, and who knows what permission was ever given between the railroad and whoever put that wall there. But I'm concerned about us setting bad precedent and us continuing to allow somebody to use our property without an agreement, without some sort of legal agreement in place to protect the town. And that's something that I talked to Attorney Austin about before this meeting, and he agrees, that's something that has to be in place in order to protect us. I will say this, though, there's a portion of the property, and I don't know if you can go back on the screens, there's Robbie to get back to the one, yeah, there you go. That bottom triangle there where there's all the trailers and things, that wasn't being used by Target or anybody else in the previous slides, and that's something that I think can be cleaned up and left vacant as it was intended to be and removed from the town's property. So maybe as part of this, we can work out how we're gonna legally protect the town with this wall and maybe clean up some of the other things that are on the property.
Those are just semi-trailers parked back there.
Yeah, I think there's a, there is a block wall there, though, too.
There is.
And I think that the landscaping that you guys were proposing, the pictures look fine, but that's something I think needs to be in that agreement, who's going to maintain it, what it's going to be, what kind of maintenance it's going to require, and who's going to take care of that stuff. And if it's on town property, but it's not our problem, we didn't cause this issue, we didn't create this issue. So I think that this is something that I feel honestly should be the burden of Target to take care of at this point. If they're going to put this landscaping in, it needs to be maintained by Target Rentals or whoever the subsequent owners are. The other thing that I thought needed to be just specified in this, we've got to make sure there's no damage to our bike trail as a result of this.
Absolutely.
We're gonna, there's only fifteen feet or so between the bike trail and this wall. You know, the machinery that it's going to take to move these one-ton blocks is going to be pretty big, I assume. And it's going to take some work, and I just don't want any damage to our bike trail, and I don't want our bike trail to be closed indefinitely while this project is going on and that kind of stuff. So I think those logistics need to be worked out to make this as quick as possible, as painless as possible to our users and our residents. But that's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Question for Andy, this image of the trailers, is this present day? Or is, it is, okay, yeah, it needs some cleaning up.
And a question, Bob, in the wall, are you going to replace the wall with different blocks?
Then, you know, some of the blocks are okay, I think from the activity that's there, them going in loading and unloading it, you know, just kept pushing on it. One of the things the berm will accomplish will actually back that wall up and prevent, you know, prevent it from toppling over. Some of, you know, and then you've got to assess each of those blocks, you know, those blocks are poured from concrete that's left over on are poured from concrete that's left over on a truck by the cement company. And so, some of them are nice and square and true, some of them not so much, but certainly we build the wall, the effort's gonna be made to use blocks that are true so that it stays, stays together. Although it stayed together for 25 years, so that's, that's a pretty long time. It certainly, I mean, could be from frost heaving and there's a lot of things that will play into that over time, so. The goal is to get it back, if you allow us to put the earth and berm up against it and plant trees on it, and that works out, that will enhance not only the view from the trail, but it'll also help stabilize that whole area as well.
Well, I definitely went there a couple of times on both sides of the wall and, I mean, your idea and plans that you have is definitely gonna dress that up. I think John will agree that it will look, it'll make the bike trail look tremendously much better. When you make that bend on the bike trail right now and you look at that wall, you think, oh, you know, it's a, it's a bad view, so.
I ride the trail a lot and, yeah, you come through there and it's a little industrial looking there. Plus, you know, you see the plant, you see the concrete trucks there and this'll, you know, with the plantings, that he's planted on, if you go by Plum Creek there, you know, behind AAA, remember when they built the U-Locks? They planted a berm and they put evergreens on it and, I mean, you can't even see anything through that from the, from the backyards or from those, the areas that they planted that in. And that's the same thing that we're, that Mr. Ruth is trying to accomplish here. He's talking about planting arborvitus along there. Once those fill in and thicken out, it'll, it'll pretty much take care of itself and screen that, that area from view.
And Mr. Austin, and what, and what is the procedure for him to set up an agreement with the town as far as providing insurance and stuff like?
Well, there is, there is the necessity of an agreement. It's town-owned property, it's being used by Mr. Ruth, there are a number of things that are of legal concern. The policy concerns about whether this is acceptable to you or not is yours. But I noted the need for a written agreement, necessity of legal description, survey, description of the subject parcel, access terms, maintenance terms, insurance terms, indemnification terms, trail preservation terms, site cleanup and code compliance, berm installation, the things that will be appropriate for forward. There are a couple of things going on here. One is, is the idea and the plan to make this safe and make this right. And that's one thing, but the details of occupancy and use are another thing. I'm also, I'm also convinced that this is an opportunity when the request is made for access of the town property to repair material containment, and Bob knows this from his extensive experience with railroad and related real estate. Once you open the Pandora's Box, things kind of come out at you. So if they're looking for access to town property to repair, this may be an opportunity given part of what was described as a correction of the encroachment and/or a re-establishment of how that encroachment will be validated going forward. License app standard to fix and some type of rental term lease, some type of simple understanding. And that's probably most important given other projects the town currently has, where we have a couple of these type issues particularly pertaining to our bike trail. So, it's an opportunity actually, as I see it, provided the right information and documentation is amenable.
Thank you. Mr. President, Mr. Ruth, I guess at this point, my rationale or my thinking on the next step would be that I would ask you or the council would ask you, are you agreeable to do certain things in order for us to allow this to proceed forward? And I think, and I'm just one vote, I'm only one voice up here, but I personally think that we need a guarantee that no damage is gonna occur to the bike trail, so that would be condition number one. Condition number two would be that, that there has to be a legal agreement in place to protect the town for all time before you can do any of this work. So that would be condition number two. Number three, that you would provide a landscaping and greenscape protection or, you know, buffer so that we don't have to see this wall anymore. That's one of the things you're proposing is a berm. Plan commission or if that has to go before the park board because that's park property, I mean, that's their, their bike trail. I don't know who this properly goes before, but some sort of a plan to say, this is what I'm proposing to put in there and who's gonna maintain it, so that would be condition number three. I personally believe that there should be some more lighting along that bike trail, so I would love to see you agree to put some lighting back there by that bike trail, maybe. That's something that you would agree to do. If that's not, I'm not, I'm not hung up on it, but that would be my condition number four. And then I believe that all of the trailers need to come off of our property. This wall is one thing, and I understand that, the wall has been there for 25 years, but those trailers were not. That's, that's storage of your equipment and your things on our property and I personally think that should come off of there, so that would be my condition number five.
Mr. President, before you move on, Caleb, this bike trail parcel is town-owned, not park department-owned. That's how it was acquired, the land itself.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, just because of the bike trail right there, I wasn't sure if that was park.
Town-owned.
Okay. So I guess fellow council members, are you guys all in agreement with those conditions firsts?
Well, I think we need to hear from them if they're, you know, if they agree.
So the conditions would be that you would, the triangle spot there at the south end, that's gotta go. And the trailers and everything gotta come out of there, okay? All right. The, if we can put additional lighting back in there, I know there's some lighting on the Smith plant, but, I mean, have you had any lighting back there?
Steph would have to put that in, I don't know what he wants to do anymore.
Okay.
He spent a lot of money on this. It probably costs us probably 40, 50 grand by now. I don't know. To fix up the corner there, we cleaned it numerous times when we, before we put the wall up, since we put the wall up. We've only been broken into, I think, two or three times in the last year, so that's slowed the people coming into the back of our yards. When we, when you put the bike trail in, we put the, the wall was up, before they put the bike trail in, there used to be a bridge there. They were coming in dumping there, we kept that clean for you. We tried to keep it neat and orderly as much as possible. And we'll buy, you know, for the 50 grand, I thought you might just let us use it for the time being and we'll take care of the, putting the bushes and the, and the berm in and you won't see the wall anymore once we get done with the berm. We'll have, you know, the fence on the top, the trees will all be animal-friendly where the deer and the stuff won't be eating them like we do in the other bushes you put in there already. They're just now gone, I think today there were like only five out of the nine or so that are left that are, have been eaten up by the animals. We have, you know, the trees still there, the, we're putting up on the top, towards the top of the berm are green giant arborvitus and they get approximately 20 to 30 feet tall and 20 feet wide. And that should block the whole, the whole area, you won't see the bike trail, but we're asking if we can retain that corner. And berm it up because we moved it back and done everything we were asked to do so far by the town. When we went back 25 years ago, the town was there to supervise where we put the wall. We put it where we were told to put it. And that was, you know, previous administration, it was not your fault. But at the same time, we listened to the town fathers at the time and put the stuff where we were told to put it. We closed in the back, we made it, when the bridge was there, we put a road in going through Public Works all the way down and where you came out the back end of our property to get to 41 with the, the Public Works. Police Department used it in the past and I think we, you know, tried to do everything in our power to make it, you know, a good situation for both parties. The street that goes down to Ristage in front of the hole in the wall, we had that cleaned out. The former, one of the directors in the town before, that they kept dumping and, you know, we were cleaning it like once or twice a month and we finally wound up putting concrete blocks down that wall to keep the people from coming in. You know, it used to, it used to be a good situation. The street from Public Works down to the old bridge, we put 125 semi-load of material in, graded it off, we rolled it and made it a decent drivable place for the Public Works and the fire and police to come through. I don't think we're asking too much, that corner's not gonna be used for anything other than junk collectors as they come in and dump their garbage. I saw four or five bags this week that were right by where the trail turns in and goes into the hole in the wall, somebody dumped back there. I remember back before we put that wall up, we had a lot more stuff getting in there. We had companies dumping roofing materials, concrete, lots of concrete and old chunks of grass and stuff. That wall has actually saved the town a lot of time and effort to keep it clean. So I'm asking that you let us maintain the wall, we'll put the berm up, rebuild the wall, if we can shove the wall in a little bit when we're doing it, we will, and try to straighten it out. I think that in the past, we followed the curve of the railroad tracks is what we were told to do and we were 10 foot off the railroad tracks is what they told us to put the wall and that's where we put it. Now you're saying we gotta move it. I'm confused as to, you know, what we're asking for and we're asking for a section of property that is useless to the town, that you don't use to reclaim possession of it since we cleaned it up and filled it and made it right. And we'll do new walls and the berms, we'll pay for that out of our own pocket. Probably gonna be 40, 50 grand on the light side, just with the trees and the bushes that we have. We had two landscaping companies come up with ideas to have grass there that you have to cut, be a good place to dump your mulch from the town. You can put it on the bank to keep your weeds out if you want. We did that in our retention pond, I think we took 75 to 100 loads of your mulch and we dug our retention pond deep when we first went in there and took your mulch and put it in that hole to bring it back up, helping the town out once again.
Thanks, Mr. Ruth. Mr. Austin, I got a question for you. Could the town actually, for a small fee, could they actually lease that piece of land to them?
The answer is yes. You have the corporate authority to do that.
Mr. President, was my question to you, could it be to them?
Are you referring to the area where the trailers are?
Yes, yes. I have a question. The wall is an eyesore, we've been told, I haven't been passed there on the bike trail. Did we have any plans to fix that wall ourselves? No, right? It's not our wall and it needs to be fixed.
We had the machinery and stuff.
To do it.
And we'll have it done and be done right. And then we wanted to back it with the berm so that in the future, if anybody in Smith's yard is pushing up against to get their aggregate out, it will push in the wall and hold the wall straight. We're gonna double block it, if not triple block it on the inside, just as an added safety feature. Probably go around a plank line instead of, you know, over here where they're going with the two-foot line stretches, where we were thinking that it'd be better to, that area right there, we're thinking it'd be better to turn up and go with the two to three-deep slot. But as you can see, there's a lot of aggregate on the other side of that wall that needs to be moved. And that's where they file it.
Yeah, I like what you're trying to do aesthetically, it's gonna be a lot better than it is now, but I think, I think it's gonna be aesthetically a lot better than it is now, so I like what you're trying to do. You know, I support the concept of it, but I think to, what Attorney Austin was saying is without an agreement, I'm wary of, you know, passing it tonight even if that's kind of where the council is and perhaps just suggesting that in the form of a motion just that we defer this, you know, until an agreement can be reached and then we can look at it again at next month's meeting.
I agree with that, that's what I was going to say. I think there's some bugs that need to be worked out and I don't think they're gonna be worked out here tonight. So I think with Mr. Gorman and Mr. Ruth, Mr. Austin and, you know, if you need to bring your attorney in, but definitely some things need to be worked out before we say yes to the whole project and I don't think we're gonna get there tonight. So, I agree with Mr. Kindly on that.
Again, I like what you're trying to do, I really do.
Are you looking at this or you have pictures of, you know, what we're putting as far as the vegetation, like you said, we have a type of grass that if you cut it twice a year, you're gonna be feeling good. It grows up, it looks nice, doesn't take much water. You wanna have guys go over it every six months or so, weed whacker, that's probably all the more it's gonna take. We have along the top, we're gonna go with the green giant arbs and put a few, you know, maybe a couple loose spruce or some other trees and then some barberry trees to keep people from going up there.
It's gonna, it's gonna look great, I'm sure.
This is what we want to put some, first what you got on the right side is what you're gonna have on the left side.
Yeah, it's definitely a good plan, but we still need to work out some other, I said it's a great plan, what you plan to do for it, but I think we have to have some stuff in writing and some assurances, so that's why I feel we should defer it tonight.
If you want it, what else you need, tell me.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna document it down, put it in the writing.
Okay.
So that they know what they're approving.
Right.
So with that being said, I'll make the motion to defer.
And I'll second.
I agree that there's some things that, upon our legal advice, that we have to, I think it's a good idea, once we iron out a few things and can we explore the option of the possibility, like I said, of a nominal lease fee? Can we talk about that too for the property where you want the storage to be so it can stay there?
We were planning if we get the approval, to get started within two weeks.
That's not gonna happen.
And cleaning that up, the other wall, we wanted to just leave and start bermaning. This is going to look terrible. You missed this, Steph said, let's see if we can get a picture, let us fix it for them.
Right.
Mr. President, one of the things that has to be worked out in this, and it really begs, begs a solution, is the encroachment. We need to get that in grip.
As far as light scope, they have, I think they do follow the light bulb, put it up on the top of their building, it's hanging this way. You will have a shadow out, so you can see all the way back to the railroad tracks. How lighting gets that right down there. The walls have been what has stopped a lot of the stuff by us as far as, you know, catalytic converters and stuff like that, we lose them all the time. The police department, I think they caught two guys in there, I think it was December or January, they caught them going in to the back.
So, so Mr. Ruth, Mr. Volkman, so can you put down on... So, um, so Mr. Ruth and Mr. Volkman, so can you put down on paper an agreement that, that you're looking for?
I, I think what we can put down is the, is things that we're proposing, I think in agreement. I mean, I would have to rely on Mr. Austin to formalize that into whatever type of document would be acceptable to the council.
At the risk of sounding, uh, like I'm soliciting, it needs to be a lawyer-prepared document. This has been in place like this for decades and needs to be fixed.
How many pages are you talking about?
I don't know. I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you. So I, I mean, the big thing for us is to know that the concept is still, is, uh, something that the town would consider.
Thank you both.
Yes.
We had a motion and we have a second on a, on a deferral until we can get more details worked out. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is item F. It's consider a variance to use to allow a dog grooming and pet supply shop to be located within Joliet Street Overlake Commercial Core District. It's a bullet, came from the border zoning case number twenty-three dash five dash five. The petitioners is Lawrence A. Ch- uh, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, and Alicia Goncharowski. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced that also. Barclays Bath House Dog Grooming and Pet Supply. The location is one oh eight dash one twelve East Joliet Street, lots eleven and twelve, original town of Shererville Block twenty-one. The BZA favorable recognition, recommendation to, recommendation to us conditions of a four oh hole. Mr. Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a proposed dog grooming and pet supply retail shop and they're looking to occupy the space on Joliet where the old Vegas Party Supply Shop was. And, um, it's right next to Gaia, the salon, right here downtown. They appeared in front of the BZA and they made a four oh recommendation and some of the conditions, thank you, uh, they wanted proof of shared parking in the rear of the building by the property owner, which we have a signed, uh, copy of that. Uh, no veterinary service will be performed on site and, uh, no selling of dogs or any other type of animals from that location. We also asked them if there was any overnight, you know, stays for the animals and they said no.
Are the petitioners in the audience?
They are.
Would you mind stepping up to the, to the podium, please? Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome. Um, I do, I do, uh, Mr. Gorman read the three, uh, conditions, um, that's on our, on our paperwork here tonight and he also talked about, um, the fact that there'll, there'll be no overnight, uh, animals there overnight, right?
Yes, absolutely.
I also was at the BZA meeting when, when you were in front of them and there was talk from one of our BZA members. I don't see that on this list. Do you, do you plan on doing anything to the wall that's connected to the, the business next door? I guess my concern would be people that are there getting their hair done at the salon. Are they, are they gonna be listening to barking dogs the, the whole time they're there?
So.
Mike, please.
Absolutely. So in the beginning, we are going to, before we even start business, that entire wall with, we're gonna have, uh, uh, sound dampening foam on it, I forget what, acoustic foam over the entire wall. Um, and we're also gonna do the same to the other side, but not completely, just in spots and same to the roof, just to help stop with the echo and the penetration through the wall. Um, later on in business, we would like to take all that wall down and put insulation on the other side of it as well. There is a concrete wall and then there's a wall that's spurred out. We would like to take the drywall off of that wall and then insulate behind the drywall for sound and then do the same thing with the foam afterwards, just to be sure later on. But, um, hopefully it won't be an issue in general because of the sound dampening foam and the two layers of wall that are already there.
Okay.
Mr. President, can I, I'd like to ask a question. Um, also with the venting system, are you putting in some type of different venting system?
Uh, no, it'll be the same. In the beginning, all we need to add is two fixtures and they're just sinks more or less in the very back. We don't even do any electric or anything like that.
Okay. Do you have any other locations?
No, sir.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm sorry, can you both state your name for the record for our, for our recorder?
Absolutely.
Lawrence Jagala.
And Alicia Goncharowski.
Thank you. What are gonna be the hours of operation?
We will start taking appointments at seven and we'll stop taking appointments around one so that the appointments, especially in the later day, will be empty at Gaia. We won't be interfering on the entire day if there is any noise that saps out.
Also, um, so that would put us at about seven till four P.M. is our formal business hours and that would be every day excluding Wednesday.
What kind of traffic flow do you anticipate as far as cars coming and going?
Typically, I would have one dog per hour. She would have two dogs per hour, so that would be.
At most.
Yeah, at most. So one to two. So that'd be one to two cars per hour dropping off, maybe ten minutes for their dog and then they would come back in two to three hours, somewhere in that range, to pick their dog up afterwards. Um, there might be some general shopping and stuff like that, but, um, all in all, it should be just those appointment times that would really be in, in a problem. And if there is a problem that eventually does arise with parking and we start clogging anything up, we can stagger appointment times. So people are coming in for me on the hour mark and they're coming in for her on the hour mark, kind of not clogging up so much at the same point in time.
Yeah.
And is the drop-off pickup line, is that gonna be in the back or is that gonna be in the front?
Um, it, it can, it's gonna be in the front. Um, we will have the back door. Um, we haven't completely figured out how we're gonna link and get the dogs from the back yet, um, but we also haven't really known if we were gonna get the location.
Um, but yeah, so we, we would plan to have them come in through the front because a lot of people already walk their dogs past on the trails and everything, so a lot of people frequent the sidewalk with their dogs already, so it would be a common thing for people to walk in there.
And also, now that I think about it, on the west side of the building, there is a parking lot that connects the sidewalk up front to the parking lot in back.
Yes.
And is there, there's gonna be a storefront of sales of pet supplies?
Yeah, dog food, shampoo, uh, tools.
Toys.
Like brushes, combs, stuff like that.
Okay.
So when the dogs are being washed and everything, is there a certain type of, um, catch you have so that dog hair is not all going down into the drains or something or how is that handled?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, we do have tubs that are specifically made for dog grooming, so they have a grate and then they have a actual, um, mesh net below it. So it'll catch ninety-nine point nine percent of the dog hair that goes through and you have to clean them, especially if it's like a double-coated dog. You have to clean it out the whole bath, like routinely, clean it out probably fifteen times. We keep a little garbage can next to the tub to throw the hair in.
And any type of accidents, waste, uh, does that just get thrown? Going back to the question about venting, because we all know our dogs have that lovely smell when they're wet. I'm just concerned about that type of odor or something bleeding into your neighbors.
So we have been working as dog groomers for quite some, and typically, especially when you use good products, which we will be using I've St. Bernard, um, you really get a heavy perfume smell from the shampoo itself. It's really, it aerates because we froth the shampoo. So it's, it really smells, and we're gonna mainly use orange, so it'll probably smell overwhelmingly like orange in the shop.
Okay.
Typically also, um, it's worth noting that most of the dogs who do come to us regularly, the clients who love us and, and want our dog, or their dogs groomed by us, they typically come in every four to eight weeks. So most of their dogs aren't smelling overwhelmingly bad to begin with.
Right. No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying when they are being washed.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there is a certain, you know, we get that certain smell from a wet dog. I mean, it's just, we all have dogs or, well, I used to have a dog, but he passed, but, um, but, you know, so my main concern though is to make sure that, you know, neighbor-friendly, that because we're not putting in a certain type of venting system that, you know, nobody is, you know, we don't get a call and say, hey, the neighbor, we're smelling, you know, we're smelling dogs or, or cats or whatever we're doing, you know?
So I did just realize what you actually meant. So there is a completely separate ventilation system. Each unit has its own separate vent.
It does.
So we'll have our own furnace, our own A.C. And every, like the cold air return and everything, it's not shared. It's all underneath our site.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and one last question, uh, Mr. Gorman, were they, are they gonna be requested, uh, any, any permits? Are you seeing any, um, special permits that they're gonna need?
No, they just need a business license, which they already applied for.
And, and if you go to do the work on the wall, like you said?
Then they will need a permit.
You'll have to come in and get a, a permit?
Absolutely. And same for the plumbing work that'll need to be done in the beginning.
So our, our staff will know then when you're doing that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It'll probably be very soon. It will, depending on today.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Any other comments?
Mr. President, motion to approve variance of use to allow dog grooming and pet supply shop to be located within the Joliet Street Cor- Overlake Commercial Corridor District. Board of Zoning Appeals Case twenty-three dash five dash five with conditions from the BZA. Proof of shared parking area in the rear of the building obtained from the property owner, no veterinary services performed on site and no selling of dogs of any kind or any animal from this location.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comment?
Nope.
No further comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Have a great day.
At thi- at this time, I'll open it up to the floor. Any business from the floor? Um, any business from the floor? State your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is H. Dean Johnson. I live at seventy-four twelve Forest Ridge Drive in Foxwood Estates. I've lived in Shererville. We built our house in nineteen ninety-eight. We moved to this town because of the aesthetics. And, um, I believe that it should get better and not decline, but if we drive through the town of Shererville now, it seems to be declining neighborhoods, uh, commercial districts. And, um, I received our letter and I was quite appreciative to see some changes in regards to our residential communities, in regards to our garbage cans, our recycle bins, weeds and all of that, overgrown, things of that nature, the aesthetics of our subdivisions are starting to decline. Our business district, uh, I don't know what you require from our business district, but I believe that when they move into this town and they landscape and all that, I heard the gentleman talking about all that they wanna do in regards to the landscaping, but it's one thing to landscape, it's another thing to maintain. And we drive through our city, well, our town, and I look at the businesses and I look at the landscaping, overgrown, weeds everywhere, nothing's maintained. Property value, that's what I think about. My neighbor stole their house for six hundred thousand. It's public knowledge. I live in a home, our house is about seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in Foxwood Estates, but I'm concerned about that. Everybody, community, they're coming up. When we were twenty-six, Foxwood was beautiful, as far as the eye could see, green grass, all of that. It doesn't exist today. Um, I don't know what you guys also require when new development come in. I know in Foxwood, we don't have a covenant, so I don't know if you did require that new subdivisions, when they come in, have a covenant, something binding that we can protect property value. Our business district, something binding, as Councilman Johnson was stating, something with teeth, that when they come in, that there is a buy-in. They don't get in, run a business, make the money, but the aesthetics is poor. I don't know if you guys drive through our town now and look at it. It doesn't look the same. So how do we attract people to come if it's declining instead of getting better? I travel all over the country. I've seen beautiful cities, beautiful towns. I drive down U.S. Thirty and I look at all that grass in the middle, overgrown, garbage, all of that. Drive down Burr Street, going to my subdivision, behind all the fencing, grass overgrown. Aesthetically, our town is not looking well. It's not. Code enforcement is very important, but one person cannot govern this entire town. Our communities have grown, subdivisions are everywhere. One person cannot manage this entire town and I believe that there should be someone for commercial, someone for residential, and there should be a staff in place that can accommodate the needs of the citizens in this town. I'm, I loved Shererville when we moved here. I, my chest would be out. Now, it's not that way anymore. It doesn't look aesthetically appealing and I have issues. Seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, our home, I have issues. Property value, very important. We pay almost ten thousand dollars in property tax. Oh, you can look it up. All of that should mean something. So I'm bringing that to this body so that you guys can bring about change. Our city, this town should be moving forward, not declining in its aesthetics. And I wanna recognize my councilwoman, Councilman Robin. Thank you for always returning my call. Thank you for always reaching out to make sure that when I recall about certain things, that they got done. I'm concerned, I like things to look nice. I like them to look appealing and they're not. They're not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and we'll, and we'll take that to heart. Thank you.
Hello. I've had the opportunity to speak to this council, so thank you for the three minutes that we get and, uh, to the other gentlemen and, um, ladies that are here. I represent, uh, the Lake Central Education Foundation. My name is Louise Talent and my address is two seven two-three Sycamore Drive in Dyer, so, a neighboring town and I do drive through Shererville. And I have to say that you guys have an awesome job. It is huge in order to keep this expanding community and you look at the building and all that's going on here. Thank you for managing that because I'm a neighbor, so thank you. And, um, if, is it okay if I just pass out my little goodies that I have for you? Is that okay, just to walk around? I'll keep talking. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I gave to everybody, uh, these little, uh, set of handouts. It is for our Lake Central Education Foundation in Shererville, Dyer, St. John. My email is on that little white sheet. Uh, and. It serves the Lake Central School Corporation. Keep him up and stay aware of us, and our organization, and work with us. Thank you for always listening. And each year, I believe in March, I did send a letter to you. If there's any opportunities for you to be able to donate to us, that would be great.
Ma'am, we, we do need you to speak into the microphone for the stream, please.
I will keep talking, but I'll get back over there to that microphone, okay? I have my time blocked, so I'm sorry. Thank you for all the servants, thank you for all the parks, and we, and we see all that you guys do. The white handout is one that is, right?
The white handout is the one that it really explains a little bit about what we do. We do give teacher grants, the money that we do earn. As we're aware, I try to let our populations in each town know that we continue to provide enriching programs through our teacher classroom to the students that Lake Central School Corporation serves. And one of the ways we also are able to earn some of our funding is through the license plate program. I see a lot of people, as I drive through Shererville, that do have this little owl on their license plate, and by zip code, the Bureau of Motor Vehicles does donate to foundations throughout the, the region and the state. We do belong to the Indiana Association of Public Education Foundations, which is a professional organization for foundations. There are 61 members in that organization. And I do want to say thank you very much for your support. We definitely try to make sure that we're supporting the educational, public education community, as well as we partner up with those schools that are of, of a private sector and educating kids, the whole idea. Our most valuable resource on the planet, most valuable, are the kids. And they're the ones with the brains, the technology that come, the engineers, the people that are here, and the governing bodies. It's, comes from the children. We also have a 5K rate. If any of you are walkers or runners, it's going to be September 9th this year. Come and join us. It's called Be a Hero. Thank you so much for your time, and you'll probably hear from me again, either through a letter, or I'll come and visit again next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Rich Pashnack. My address is 530 Third Lane. I've been here for 25 years, much like the previous gentleman. And my comment or question is whether the council would consider moving the Shererville Festival from Reader Park to Roarman Park, much like Dyer did, moving out of the neighborhood and going to their central park. As I said, I've lived here for 25 years, and I've gone to the festival much as I, I could. I took my kids, I took my grandkids this year. I've taken them several times. Monday or Tuesday before the festival started, I, a couple of girls were putting signs up on the street in front of my house with no parking, and I said, what the heck are you doing that for? Cars never come out here, you know? She said, well, they told us to put them out. Well, they did. I mean, they, they actually went all the way down Kathleen, past Govert, all the way down to the ditch, and they were on Govert Drive themselves, and that doesn't bother me. I mean, I've got plenty of parking, that's not the issue. The issue is just to show how much this festival has grown over the last X many years that it's been here. And I think for purposes of having less friction, like in the neighborhoods, I mean, with, with all the cars and, and the other gentleman spoke about all the garbage that gets thrown about, and, and the town employees do, they, they drive around in little go-karts and pick the stuff up. But it's a messy-looking thing, but there'd be much more parking available, I'm sure, at Roarman. I mean, we already have the fireworks there, and it wouldn't be directly within a neighborhood like, like it is now. And I just think that it might be a wise thing to do, or at least to consider. And the other thing in conjunction with that is consideration of making a gated entrance and watching people, checking people for weapons. Shererville certainly is not immune to the possibility of something like that happening. I don't go on social media. I go on this Nextdoor app that we have around here, and I know some of you are on the app. But there was a lot of comments on there about things that supposedly happened at the festival this year, and, you know, how much is true, how much isn't. I, I don't really care. I was there. I didn't see anything bad happening. There was a, a large police presence, and everything looked pretty good to me, but it's just, it's really getting crowded into that area, and the whole area around it, and I think it might be time to move it. You know, I mean, I enjoyed the neighborhood, and I still enjoyed it this year, but I think it's just getting a little bit crowded, and again, I think you could have a little better security if, if we did go to Roarman, and just, I think, some, something to consider for next year's festival, so.
Yeah, we, we appreciate the comments, and nat- naturally, the safety of our residents are our number-one concern. Since the festival ended Saturday, we, we've formed a subcommittee already consisting of our park board, our, some of our council members, our staff members from all four of our staff, uh, different departments, to form a committee to look into what the next steps would be on the festival. Naturally, it really makes sense to move it to Roarman. I'm not sure that that will be developed by next year, but I, I can guarantee you that we'll be looking at all different ideas to make it safer and, and not, and to cut down on any problems that we had, so.
Like, like I said, I, I don't think it's overrun with problems. I mean, I, you know, I didn't, I don't think that at all. Like I said, there was a lot of stuff. On the one post on the website, there must have been 150 people commenting about this happened and that happened, you know, and I'm sure 98% of it's hearsay and whatever else, but it's just, again, it is getting awful crowded in there, and the parking is really becoming much more of an issue.
Yes, it, it's expanded so much the last couple of years, and, and we definitely hear, hear what you're saying, and we understand that, so we'll be, we will be making some changes, for the better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the floor?
Hello. Jonathan McNinch, 6923 Swan Lane. Both of these gentlemen kind of stole my thunder, so to speak, but my comment is regards to the Shererville Fest. I'm glad to hear that there was or will be a subcommittee being formed to study this. Is the public involved to get in with this? Will there be feedback session as far as the subcommittee is concerned?
Um, yeah, as soon as we, as soon as we get our, our plans, naturally, we'll, we'll be transparent with the public to let them know what, what the changes will be.
Okay. I was there on Saturday night, and again, like this gentleman said, when it comes to Facebook, well, I don't touch the stuff, but a lot of that, I believe, is hearsay, but unfortunately, Saturday night, I was there when some of those, for birds, mob fights broke out. I was in the beer garden, and my fiancee and I were there, and it was very, very sad. I don't know if there was a gun there or not. You hear all kind of rumors on the internet, but there were kids running that were scared for their lives about a gun being there. And I never in my life thought in Indiana that kind of mentality would be around. So, again, it's glad to hear this is happening, and I'll keep us posted.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the? No further comments. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and have a good night.